President Brea arrives, so we will be starting with the normal business. Candidates for council are welcome to remain in the meeting for the council business. And once we begin council interviews, we will ask you to leave and then wait in the waiting room while we go one by one. So the time is 7:32. I'll call this meeting to order, please. I'm going to start with muting everyone. I don't know how to do that. And we are going to begin with the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mary Ann, can you please do the roll call attendance?
Sure. Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Sigal Morris?
Present.
Mr. Brea? Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Finer?
Present.
And Mr. Ross?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any community announcements from council? Are there any community announcements from the public? Or the mayor? Sorry. Yes, Mr. Guadati?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a community announcement. Our local VFW 6393 will be hosting for everybody's entertainment, a outdoor movie on Saturday evening at 6 o'clock. It's free of charge for anyone who wants to attend. There'll be a food shop available. The movie will begin about 8 o'clock. There will be games outside as well. But it might be a good way to get your kids out, you know, just before school starts, to enjoy a little bit of fun outside. But everybody is welcome on Saturday night at 6:00 PM over at the local VFW, just on top of the hill. It's not the American Legion, it's the VFW between Newtown and Yardley. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Guadati. Any other public comment from council, the mayor, or anyone else on the call? You can use the raise hand function if you don't have your video on. I'm not seeing anyone. The next portion of the meeting is public comment. This portion of the meeting is the portion in which members of the audience may address council on matters not on the agenda. If you wish to comment on an item that is on the agenda, you will be given the opportunity to do so during council's discussion of that item. Members of the audience who wish to address council are asked to use the raise hand function. You should have been given prompts to do that when you called in if you're on a landline or cellphone. We are asking that we adhere to the council policy of three minutes this evening per issue so that we can have enough time to get to all the council interviews this evening. Is there any public comment? All right, I am calling on Mr. Carlson. You can unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Don Carlson, 14 Creedview Lane. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Yardley Walk Homeowners Association. Just wanted to get council up to speed on what is happening or what isn't happening in finishing our community. The last home built here was in November of 2018, and for the last 20 months, the builder has not done, has not finished off the project. RV has worked with the builder and ourselves and come up with a punch list of about 100 items that was supposed to be done this summer and at the latest this fall. And now we just learned that the builder has decided they aren't going to do any of those items, and they're now telling us it won't be till next July to complete them. So that'll be 32 months after the last house is built. There are a couple items, what we're asking for council's help on, is there a few items on that list that are safety-related? ADA handle railings that are missing on the path that goes up to Whiskey Hill, fencing that's broken, and fencing that's missing. And if there's any way council through RV or someone can put some pressure on the builder to at least do the safety issues, including drainage, before winter, the 63 people here would be very appreciative of that. And then my last comment, or it's kind of a question, is for those who've been around a long time, is what is a builder's obligation for when they're supposed to finish everything? It's now been, I've been in my home five years now, and it's been a long time. Can they just drag this out forever and ever? Or is there, did the borough set up some deal where they can put pressure on them for another direction?
I guess we would have to look into if there's anything contractually obligating them to meet their punch list within a certain amount of time. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can certainly, Paula, can you look into And Liz, can you go over what the best method might be for reaching out to the builder and, you know, putting some pressure on it for these punch list items?
So I actually called them today and yesterday trying to get in touch with them because they've been dodging us as well. We had a walk-through on June 17th with them and with a contractor to address all those things, and they, you know, put us under the same impression that they were going to attempt to do it as soon as possible and into the fall. So I don't really know where the delay is coming from, but I'm not entirely sure about what mode we have to pressure things. I mean, you know, we still have their escrow, but they don't seem to be in a rush to reclaim it. That's really our only leverage. So when they're not necessarily hurting for that, there's not much else we can do. Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, the easy one is any safety issue, we can get them to respond fairly quickly.
What was that? Can you repeat that?
Oh, yeah. I said, any safety issues, we should be able to get them to respond to very quickly. All the items, they do have a bond, they have to, it costs them money to keep carrying their bond as long as they do. We can put some pressure on them, we can say we're going to call the bond, you know, just like a threat. We can see if we can get them to, you know, respond more quickly than what they're doing at this point, because, yeah, things are kind of dragging on. So let us make some phone calls and we'll see what we can do tomorrow.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Carlson, is email a good method to follow up with you on this?
Yeah, that's fine.
Question?
Yes. Paula has that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Dr. Pearl Mutter, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'd just like to follow up on this. I would think that that's a code enforcement issue, especially if it involves safety. So why wouldn't code enforcement look into that? And wouldn't there be fines if it's not done? Why would the engineers be involved in that? It just seems to me that if it's really code enforcement, and maybe even, I don't know how serious, but that is what our ordinances, that's why they're here to address that. I just thought I'd bring that up. That might be the solution.
Thank you, Dr. Pearl Mutter. We'll certainly look into that if there's any code enforcement issues here.
Can I respond to that real quick?
Certainly.
Sure. Code enforcement deals with the buildings themselves. So if there's any issues with the building, any ADA requirements that weren't installed or installed incorrectly with the buildings, that falls under their purview. Once it's within, when is it outside of five foot of the building, then it's really the township or the borough. And we, as your agent for the borough, would act to then make sure that they do the site improvements correctly.
Thank you, Ms. Weech. Any other public comment? I am not seeing any. Next, we will consider the consent agenda. I will ask that the special event permit be removed from the consent agenda because we were asked that it be changed slightly. Do I have a motion to vote on the remaining items in the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. The motion has been put forth by councilperson McCann and seconded by councilperson Finer. Are there any comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right, the change to the special event permit was to add Thursday evenings to the cornhole league special event permit because of high demand. Do I hear a motion to vote on that amended special event permit?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The motion was put forth by councilperson Ross and seconded by councilperson Sigal Morris. Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Actually, that was, if you heard me, I said aye.
Yes, but we're missing two council members, so I think that's five to zero.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. Four, not bad math.
That's why I paused the first time. It's like, how many are we down to? All right, chief, take it away.
Thank you, ma'am. I have the monthly report for August 2020. In August, the police department handled 468 calls for service. We issued 54 moving traffic citations, three parking tickets. We investigated five traffic accidents and only had one arrest, and none were for DUI. The only other item I have, ma'am, is I wanted to report that the police department completed our CPR AED and first aid refresher. One of our part-time police officers is an instructor and a paramedic, and he was able to get the department completed by our deadline for MOPAC late this month. And I wanted to commend Officer Scott Frank for his assistance in that. And that concludes my report, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from council for Chief Kelly? Any questions from the public? Not seeing any. All right, engineers' report, please.
All righty then, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. With regards to the engineers' report and general updates, other than what was included in my report sent to council beforehand, there is nothing new. And there's only one item that requires action if you're ready to move on it. That would be in regards to the Buck Creek watershed management plan, whether or not the borough is willing to pay the initial invoice since we are struggling to go through the reimbursement process with the grant coordinator so that ASA can continue to work as we kind of get through the hiccups of the first round of that process.
Are there any questions or motions on the table with respect to the watershed project? I guess I would ask if we have any concerns, if there's been hiccups with the reimbursement coordinator, that if we do put the money upfront, do we have concerns that they will actually reimburse us?
I don't think there's any concerns with that. I think it's just been issues with people being on vacation and making sure we have the right support documents for the first one, because you have to provide the progress report to go along with the initial reimbursement thing. So I don't think it's going to typically be like this moving forward. I just think that at this point, with ASA's first invoice being given to us at the end of May and was for work that they did in April, I can understand why they are hesitant to move forward with the work, and I don't want to continue pushing back, collecting data, though they're waiting to be paid to go out and install the equipment. We could potentially push things forward with the reimbursement quickly throughout September, and it will be a non-issue. Like, this could be punted. Like, if we continue struggling this month, then I would heavily recommend that we bite the bullet and at least reimburse them for this one, and then seek reimbursement ourselves, or pay this invoice and then seek reimbursement ourselves.
What is the amount of the invoice?
$3,801.
Is there, do I hear a motion to approve paying this invoice so that we can move forward with the Grown Greener Grant?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made by councilperson McCann, seconded by councilperson Ross. Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion or questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Are there any other questions on the updates portion of the engineers' report?
I have a question about the, well, I have two questions. One is about the change order, but is that later? Are we going over that later?
Yes, I'll be bringing that up next, yep.
Okay, I'll save it for that. My only question is about the advanced pedestrian phase on Main and Afton. Last I saw, was it in yet? Is it in? Or if not, then when is it going to be installed?
I was under the impression that it was installed.
Oh, it was? Okay, maybe it was when I, because I had tested it some, you know, a few days ago, and it just, I mean, it was, obviously, when it was first installed, it wasn't doing it. So I don't know if they updated it after it was installed, correct?
Yeah, so all the equipment was put in, and then they had to have some come out in the field and update the control box with the new.
Okay. Got it, great.
I'm under the impression that that has occurred, but we haven't done our final inspection to check that out. We actually just used final quantities from them today, so we'll be going through that process.
Great, thank you.
Well, I guess that brings me right into the project updates. Main and Afton is the first one on there. So yes, as far as we have been told, they are done with their work out there. We did reach out to PennDOT to have them start taking a look into whether or not we are still in ADA compliance with regards to the awkward access to the Continental Tavern ramp. So I have spoken with somebody at PennDOT, and I was assured that they're going to reach out to the appropriate department and see what our next steps are. My understanding is that someone will go out and do an inspection, verify whether or not we're still in compliance. And then if we are or we aren't, then we'll move forward from there. And then lastly, the change of scope was submitted, and this scope covered the addition of having to deal with the ADA ramps, the yellow flashing light phasing, the ROW work needed to place some of the equipment that was now outside of the original right-of-way, and then lastly, the advanced pedestrian phase. So I don't have the total cost of the change of scope in front of me at the moment, but I can find that if Matt doesn't have it up. But yes, does anybody have any questions about the change of scope?
I was, I actually wanted to ask if it could be those main items, they're like four things, I think.
Yes.
Three or four. If we could get an itemized total, and the reason was just that I know, for example, the cost of one of them we approved has a separate motion, so I was just, I wanted to make sure that the cost hadn't gone beyond what we had agreed to. So it'd be just helpful to get the itemized, because this letter has the total, which is $12,809.75.
Okay, yeah.
Not have them broken down. So do you have that?
Um, I don't have them individualized, cost out like that personally, but we can certainly provide that. So if that's something that you guys need to see before you approve this, then we'll get that information to you, and we'll approve this at the next meeting.
I mean, I didn't want to hold it up. It's just that it'd be helpful to know.
I do know that.
Come back later and get it.
Yeah, no, I do know that the advanced pedestrian phase, that was something that we agreed upon at a particular meeting, and that that did not exceed that cost. I did actually check that one, but the other items were a little bit before my involvement, so I'm not as familiar.
I see.
Yori, it's not a problem. We will give you the breakdown, and like Liz said, we can discuss it until the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good to me. Thanks.
Then I guess if there's no other questions about Main and Afton, I'll move forward to the next main projects that we have, which would be the Mary Yardley Bridge.
I do have one more, sorry about Main and Afton. Just, you know, Susan Taylor brought up the scale of, obviously, it's all in place, so it's too late to change it, but I would like, and I think she has a point, I think the, in a historic borough, part of it is because we're used to it being the small little lights that we had before, and we're trying to, obviously, we wanted the pedestrian safety, so all of that is understood. But I, and I wasn't here on council during the time when all the plans were being drawn up for this, but I would like to learn from that for future projects involving the borough and to make sure that, on the engineering side, that we're presented with, there's some level of review or just giving us options for, that are in keeping with the look of a small historic borough, to make sure that we don't have, like, you know, LA-style, it's an exaggeration, but LA-style infrastructure built in a small historic borough.
Yeah, which is definitely understood. The tough part with this is with it being a PennDOT intersection, there is not a lot of choice involved in those. You know, they have very strict standards that get decided upon at the state level. But I think when it comes to protecting the character of the borough going forward with any kind of project, something the borough might be interested in taking a look at is form-based code. It's not done everywhere, but it is very popular in historic districts where it kind of combines a little bit more of discrete detail and architecture in with your actual code. So it adds another layer of how things get reviewed and approved upon when they are put into your area. So we can definitely give you guys some literature to look at about that, but that would mean you would be updating your borough code, but you're just kind of adding that layer. So form-based code basically take all the different things that you might want to have ideas about what they look like with regards to the facades or the heights of things or things like that, and you kind of pick out your own palette and options that developers and other people are allowed to pick from. And if it's not on that pre-approved list, then it has to come in for individual review. It just kind of adds another layer.
So then council could say, okay, PennDOT's requirements don't match this, are we willing to override it or not? Is it council decision then to do that? Is that what you're saying?
It might be able to give you a little bit more leverage in a conversation if it is being in violation of your code.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I mean, I would love to see that, that would be helpful, and I think what I'm asking for is just that we, if there is no option, that we at least are made aware, maybe there were, because I wasn't here, so maybe that was, that happened, but just to make sure in the future, whether we do this thing or not that you're talking about, that we are aware that the eyes have looked at this and said, you know, it would fit the character of the borough more to have something smaller, but here's where we're constrained. So just so you know, we looked, you know, make sure that that's not overlooked, because I do think we are kind of outside of what the typical infrastructure would be for a lot of places.
Agreed.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Move on to Mary Yardley Bridge, Carolyn?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. So Mary Yardley Bridge, we finally were able to make contact with DCNR, and we submitted to them our preliminary design with the bridge itself and the grading and ENS and all that, so it's in their hands. So we're finally moving forward again, which is exciting. And once they give us the go-ahead, we will finalize the construction plans, and then we will submit for the GP11 and for our ENS permit through the Bucks County Conservation District. And once we have our permits, we'll be all good to go. So that's moving along. And once we have the permits, we can then reconvene about when we think we want to put together the bid package and go out to bid, which would give us that final hard number of what is actually required to construct the project.
Can you please give an updated, realistic timeline that we're looking at? I know it shifted based on some holdups with the permitting.
Yeah, I reached out to the infrastructure group to kind of give me an updated schedule, and unfortunately, they were not able to get anything back to me before this meeting. But based off of previous experience with DEP and GP11s and things like that, once we hear back from DCNR and we submit, they have 30 days to review. So if we hear back from DCNR in the next two weeks, and they don't have too many comments, and we can address them, I foresee us being able to get all the permits to have submitted by the end of September, and then we could ostensibly have all of our permits by the end of October. But that's if everything goes smoothly.
Which it has not with this project to date, frankly. Any other questions on Mary Yardley Bridge? Okay, moving on.
There's still no update with PICO as far as we've heard. I know Paula was trying to get in touch with them, but that hasn't moved. And then lastly, we have North Main sidewalk. At the last council meeting, the design proposal was approved, and so we are moving forward with that. And the only thing I need from you guys tonight is the approval to put together the MTF grant that's due at the end of the month. So at the next council meeting, I'll be coming with you the resolution, but this is just to approve us to put together the grant application.
I can make that motion. Do you want to make the official motion, Carol?
I mean, you can raise the motion however you'd like.
I'd like to move to have RV create a grant package for the MTA grant.
You have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by, oh, that motion was made by councilperson Ross and seconded by councilperson McCann, I believe. Are there, is there any discussion from council? Any discussion or questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
All right, then that is it. And then expect to review the resolution before the next meeting, and then we will be submitting that at the end of the month.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, solicitors' report.
Madam President, I think you skipped the managers' report.
That's okay.
I apologize, Manager Johnson. Do you have anything to report this evening?
Besides my report that I already submitted to you, I just wanted to let you know that we are having another liquid fuels audit, so we're providing everything digitally for them to do in Harrisburg. And then before you, I have our MMOs for And then before you, I have our MMOs for 2021. And this is for the police pension and the non-uniform pension. It's just an estimate that we have to have approved by council that is going to go into the pension funds for next year. So it's just an estimate, but it's something that we have to submit to our pension people, PMRS. So that will need a consensus.
Just scrolling down to it. Do I?
Do you want me to read it or no?
Sure.
The 2021 MMO for the police pension will be approximately $68,150. And for the non-uniform, it'll be approximately $4,829. And being a small town, we're very fortunate that probably 99% of our obligation for the pensions are covered by our state.
Thank you, Manager Johnson. Do I hear a motion from council to approve the amounts as quoted by Manager Johnson for the MMO?
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Councilperson Siegel Morris, seconded by Councilperson Ross. Is there any discussion or questions from council? Questions from the public? Dr. Pearl Mutter, please go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, that's the amount of the pensions for the police department. Is there another number for managers? Or is there another pension plan?
Yeah, I said the non-uniform was 4,800, I believe. Yeah, 4,829 was the non-uniform.
And what amount of time is that over the year, the annual?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council or from the public? Don't see any. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Then the next item I have for you is Resolution 2007, and it's accepting the franchise agreement between the borough and Comcast. And this is something that has been going on for over a year. Cohen and Associates was the one that took care of a bunch of municipalities in the area and worked out the agreement between Comcast and all the municipalities. And it's from listening to all the other area managers, everybody's very happy with this agreement. The franchise fees are remaining. And they said it's a a great thing to still have. So we just need to a consensus for that as well.
Where are we in this process, Bucky? Do we need to advertise this or we can vote on? Vote on it this evening?
You can vote on it this evening. It's just a resolution. So it would be a resolution essentially adopting or authorizing the borough to enter into this franchise agreement.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Mr. McCann, okay. I hear I heard the motion from Councilperson Ross, seconded by Councilperson McCann. Is there any questions or comments from council?
Well, I have a question here. I just want to understand, is there any change here?
Very little. And it's a 10-year agreement, so we won't have to be doing this for another 10 years. The franchise is still 5%, and that's what we are currently getting. There is some availability to get some free internet into like Borough Hall and the Firehouse. They talk about appointments, how quick they have to be at appointments. And I can send you the, I thought I did.
Is that new that they're giving a free internet?
No, no, they've had that before, but it's a very slow speed. It's not stuff that a lot of municipalities actually use, unfortunately.
And it's not, it's not something that they can make faster if on request or it's just, that's just.
Well, they're a little hesitant. It's going to cost them more money.
I see. Is and is there anything? I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I'm not familiar. I don't remember ever having come across this before. So maybe because it's every 10 years. But is there anything that makes, gives an exclusive rights? Here, do you know?
No, I'm not sure.
I just want to make sure we're not bound, you know, some sometimes these companies, communications companies slip things into small burrows that they don't realize they're signing. And I just was wondering if this is just, maybe the solicitor could give us all this sort of a clearance that we're not being bound by anything or preventing, you know, competition or that kind of thing.
But this was also, remember, it was done for many municipalities. So it was a whole group of us that got together.
I understand.
Okay.
Yes, Councilperson Finer, I can't answer that directly because I didn't read the entire agreement. What I did read was the executive summary that Paula forwarded from the Cohen Law Group, which was the firm that handled the negotiations on behalf of the consortium of municipalities with Comcast. I don't see anything about exclusivity in here in the executive summary. I assume if that were the case, that it would have been noted. But I'll be honest with you, I haven't read the entire agreement. So I can't say 100% for sure that that's not addressed.
So overall, you're comfortable that there's no material change here in terms of Comcast's?
Yeah, per the.
Rights for granting them.
Right, per the executive summary of the agreement. I think the agreement is like 50 pages long. But there was a good summary provided. And as Paula said, the, you know, franchise fees are are consistent and remain the same, which I think is a positive outcome. There was a section in the summary about customer service standards that are specifically included in the agreement, talking about the four-hour appointment window, you know, times for starting installation, answering time limits for, you know, consumer complaints when people call in, you know, that sort of thing. So all of that seemed positive to me that that was all spelled out in particular in the agreement. And then there are various other provisions mentioned in the summary, you know, right-of-way protection for the borough, our reporting requirements, you know, various other cable system requirements, the requirements for an educational and governmental channel and services to community facilities. So again, it seemed, and there was also liquidated damages clause added to the agreement. So, you know, if there are violations or they don't perform, then they're hit with a liquidated damages per day, a fine essentially. So again, nothing jumped out at me in the executive summary that would cause concern.
And who created the executive summary?
The law firm that represented the borough and the consortium of municipalities in the negotiations.
So we could assume that the executive summary was on the up and up.
That I believe so, yes.
And Yori, I'll send you that in the morning as well, so you can read it through.
Oh, it sounds like fun. Thank you.
Yes, it is. If you want the whole agreement, you can have it all.
Thank you for providing me some reading material for breakfast.
I will say that this represents $60,000 to $70,000 in income every year. And when I joined council, the former Chair of General Government wasn't sure that this would be offered to us again because of all of the cable cutting that's going on. So this is a big win for us. If there's no other questions, I will call the question. I see Mr. Levine, go ahead.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to back up what Mr. Finer was asking about. I'd really like to see some of the, you know, know what some of the details of what Comcast is asking. It sort of have trouble believing in the idea of a free lunch. So I'd like, just like to know that they're not going to try to enforce any kind of protections to prevent, say, Verizon from coming in. I noticed you said right-of-way protection. I'd like to know specifically what's meant by that, among other things.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Is there any further?
Level the details. Go on.
And Verizon does service the borough, so I don't, you know. But yeah, it would be, it would be interesting if it's somewhere hidden in this was something that prevented that. We didn't know about it. We found out the next day. I don't think that's the case after hearing solicitors' assessment.
Do they service the whole borough though?
Yes.
I was going to comment on their request to, for clarification on the right-of-way protection. The summary says that Comcast agreed to repair any damage to public or private property by Comcast or any of its contractors or subcontractors within 20 days. In addition, the agreement includes safety standards, the provision of service area maps in the borough upon request, requirements for disconnection and relocation of Comcast wires and equipment, removal of equipment in the case of an emergency, and the need for borough approval for cutting down any trees in the public right of way. So that is the executive summary that I was provided. Thank you.
So Manager Johnson, can I ask that you you follow up with with Mr. Levine and Councilperson Finer with that executive summary? I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor, please say, oh, Mr. Gudadi, do you have a question?
Listen real quick. When I was part of the Technology Advisory Board, probably 10 years ago, when this was all renegotiated last time, there is room for negotiation for those municipal supplies lines that go to the police department and to Borough Office and the Fire Department and other community offices. You can negotiate those speeds up. There's nothing holding us to those slow speeds. They can be negotiated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't see any further questions, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
And my last item is, I put in your packet that there's been a couple of comments about some things in town. And one of them was our period streetlights that we anticipated working on next year to sand them all and repaint them. If you want to approve to get it done, I'm not 100% sure where in the budget we'll take it from, but it's going to cost approximately $2,500. That's something you guys have to decide on. Otherwise, I think spring is okay. And then also, I checked into replacement of the borough-owned trash receptacles that are in town. And I think they were probably installed about 20, 25 years ago. So I got prices for that. And to do 15, it would cost just for materials alone, it would be about $6,860.95 plus installation. We could probably get away with doing 10 right now, and that would be about $5,000 plus installation. So if you want to do this now instead of waiting, that's, the ball is in your court. You have to just let me know.
So Paula did ask me about this. I told her to put it in for your consideration. I know, I know I oversee the budget, but I'm not all of council. I'm personally against the unbudgeted expenditures, given that they are not an emergency and we are in deficit budget right now. So I would welcome questions or comments from the rest of council, though.
I would, I would like kind of agree with you that if we can wait till the spring to do all that and we're not in dire need of replacement for it or repainting those light posts, that we we wait on until till next budget year.
I'm with Caroline on that as well. And Matt, maybe we could spruce up our trashcans on Council on the Community Day.
The exact year I want to clean trashcans during a pandemic. Any other questions or comments on this? Sounds like we're going to hold off Paula.
Okay.
I will say that we, the one thing on the other side to that, clearly, we should, you know, that we have to be responsible with the money. However, these little things are starting to come up more and more. And I think we just, we don't want to let these things slip and have a sense of decay around here. So we want to make sure we take this up again, you know, and that we don't forget about it.
We are definitely adding it to next year's budget, though.
Yeah, it wasn't wasted time. We have a, you know, a line item figure now, a very exact number that we can put in the budget instead of approximating it. So it's good work, Paula. Thank you.
And also your idea of community work to, for beautification of the trash or whatever else is great.
I meant it. I'll I'll go paint.
Sounds great. My kids will do that too, although you have to paint after they paint because I don't know what the result will be.
You might, yeah. I'm not promising the quality job.
Okay, anything else on this before we move on?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you, Manager Johnson. Now the solicitors' report.
Thank you. The only item is an update on the line of credit loan with First National Bank of Newtown. We did receive the state approval to proceed last week. I've prepared all of the loan closing documents. And Paula is in the process of getting those signed and finalized. And then we will close the loan on Friday, this Friday. So at that point, the the money will be available to the borough. And just as a reminder, we do need to pull down $50,000 initially to establish that closing date and fix the very low interest rate, which we want to do. So that'll be done this week. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions on that report from council? Any questions from the public? Just got a text. David will be here in 10 minutes for all of you who wanted to know. All right, Mayor's report.
Hey, in light of keeping everything moving forward this evening, no report. I'll save everything till next two weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember reports. Mr. Ross.
I, Public Works has not met and Liz kind of covered everything else. So I'll have a report next time because we're going to be meeting for Public Works before the next council meeting. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilperson Siegel Morris.
Human Relations will be meeting later this week. And at Public Safety, Wes Fouracre mentioned that we needed to establish a chain of command and that we need to work on having someone trained to do all of Paula's responsibilities. So I will talk to Wes and get back to you guys later with more information.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Councilperson Bria is not here yet. I do not have anything to report. Councilperson McCann.
Well, to say, we met tonight. Community Economic Development, obviously, a slot is not filled. So we look forward to filling that vacant slot. So another council member joining me in that meeting. And just a reminder to people that you can donate to the Mary Yardley Bridge Fund. You go to F O D C dot org and you'll find instructions there for how you can donate online. So thank you.
Thank you. And Councilperson Finer.
Community Outreach met today and I want to thank manager, our Borough Manager Paula, for updating the calendar, having all of our meetings in there. Very useful. We're going to move forward with an email service and experiment and see if we can get that integrated. So that's coming soon. And finally, we are going to establish an appeals board. And this is a good opportunity to start advertising that. So there are many people joining us today. And this would be a great position for someone who wants to provide some service to the borough. And I think it'll be a great committee that we don't currently have. And it's also a good thing because it's not something where you, if you're limited in time, you don't have to be here every two weeks. It's something that's going to be as needed, maybe a few times a year. So it's a great position. I hope we get a lot of applicants and throwing the word out now. Also, we're looking for Human Relations members as well. So plenty of opportunities to be involved. So please forward applications to Paula.
Thank you. I see raised hand. Dr. Pearl Mutter, go ahead.
Thank you. I had raised my hand in regard to Council, Councilman Siegel Morris. Um, thank you. I had raised my hand in regard to Council, Councilman Siegel Morris. Could you clarify what you meant when you said somebody, it just sounded a little confused. Somebody to, first of all, you need a chain of command, and then someone to do Paula's work. What was that?
I'm just gonna let Wes explain that better than I did.
Wes, go ahead. Trying to unmute you, but it's not letting me.
Am I there?
Yes, there you go.
What we're referring to is the Continuity of Operations Plan. We kicked it around this year due to the COVID, and we found a couple of places where we can make some improvements. When the Continuity of Operations Plan was first drafted, I believe it was 2014, Paula was Assistant Manager, John Boyle was Manager. We do not have, currently have, an Assistant Manager. So the idea is for a line of succession, should Paula not be able to fulfill her duties, for whatever reason, we have somebody able to step in when it's necessary, and it would only be when it's necessary. We have lines identified for council, emergency management, police department. This is one area where we're, we just don't have that backup yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the councilmember reports? Don't see any. Okay, so this, we're moving to discussion items. Does anyone have any discussion items that weren't on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move to other business, which will be our council interviews.
The question.
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Guadati.
I think I'm unmuted. Just to answer the question that came up a little bit earlier tonight about the Form Base Code, just a heads up for everybody, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. As a part of the comprehensive plan, the 10-year comprehensive plan, Mike Mueller actually put together about 50 pages already of odds and ends that would fit the description that you had asked for. So maybe we should touch base with this and address it at a future date. But I just want to let you know that it already exists, about 50 pages worth in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the way that we are going to handle this, the councilperson interviews, for those who missed the very beginning of the meeting, is we'll ask all of the council candidates to leave the meeting and then immediately come back in and wait in the waiting room. And we will admit you as it is your turn to be interviewed. The order of interviews is the order in which we received applications. First will be Dawn Perlmutter, then Matt Curtin, then Victoria. Victoria, you need to help me with your last name again. I apologize. I'll unmute you.
Chahaski.
Chahaski, Chahaski. And Danielle Mohn and Brad, finally Brad Levine. So are there any questions from the candidates before you leave?
Carolyn, I believe I can put them into the waiting room, right? Or do they have to actually sign off?
Not certain.
Let me, Matt, I'm gonna try to, I'm, Matt, I'm gonna put you in the waiting room.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
There you go. Yep. Bye, Vicki. I'm putting you in your waiting room. Where else do we have? Number two. They're hiding. I don't see them. Oh, Dan. Dan's not, he's a big D. Put in waiting room. And then Brad. Into, oh, waiting room. I think that's everyone.
Dawn's still here.
Okay, let me see. It says five people are in the waiting room. Oh, David's there, so let's let him out.
You can leave him there. It's okay.
Okay. And then you want Dawn in the waiting room as well?
Uh.
He's the first.
Yes. Why don't you put her in the waiting room just while we get situated here?
Okay. Okay, they are gone, I think.
Hey, everyone. Sorry for being late.
We just placed everyone in the waiting room. So do you want to say anything before we start the interviews?
No, I don't think so.
I will say that I cannot make the next council meeting. So hopefully, we can vote this evening, just so everyone can put their decision-making caps on. Okay. I'm turning over the meeting to you, David.
Okay, so I guess before we bring everyone in, let's just talk a little bit of process stuff. You know, I'm assuming that these will probably go relatively quickly, because we have interviewed some of the candidates before. But we'll follow a similar format to what we did the first time we did this, which was allowing each candidate to make a brief opening statement. Each council member will then have two to three minutes to ask questions of the candidate, and we'll allow for a closing statement. So that should keep each one to 20 minutes or so. Anybody have any objections to any of that? All right, sounds good. Let's begin.
All right, so now we've got to find them in their waiting room. See, you would like Ms. Perlmutter. All right, here comes Dawn Perlmutter. There she is.
Hi, Ms. Perlmutter, are you with us? You can hear us. Everything's good technically on your end?
You're on mute.
There we go.
All right, there we go. All right, so just very quickly, our process tonight is going to be very nearly the same as the last time we did this. I'll give you about two minutes to make an opening statement. Each member of council will then have an opportunity to ask some questions. Then there'll be time for a brief closing statement. That should keep us to, you know, a max of 20 minutes per candidate. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Perlmutter for your opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity with this rare appointment. I have a, I've been a longtime resident of Yardley Borough. I can't believe, almost 28 years. I went through three floods, and I have, that's what actually got me interested in Yardley Borough Council, just from having to rebuild and raise my house, and then moving onto College Avenue and redoing this home. And so I've had a lot of experience with, with different code enforcement, zoning issues, went through the variance process. I have a background in academia and law enforcement consulting and training. And I have a lot of skills that I think will be very applicable as a council member. I can write grants. I've applied for numerous grants. I can assist with, one of the things I'm really hoping to assist with is better communications. I know that you've had, it's been a really difficult year with COVID and everybody figuring out Zoom. And you're doing a great job with it. But from walking my dogs around town and talking to everyone, I found out that a lot of people aren't even aware that the council meetings are still going on. There's, and some are aware, but don't have, not everybody has the technology or the ability to participate. So I would like to come up with some creative ideas to help with that. I also think that the really big issues, for example, there's been a number of major ordinances that have been passed recently. The Police Auxiliary Unit, the borrowing of half a million dollars. They're about to pass two ordinances that have to do with pensions. I think with an item like that, in a situation where we don't have the regular communications, I think sometimes low tech is better than high tech. And I think it's worth literally mailing information out to residents when it has to do with, with big ordinances, just even if it's temporarily, until we get back to the public forum. So again, that's one of my, you know, one of the things I would like to address is communications. I would, even if I need to, I'll, I'll hold workshops, helping people learn how to use Zoom. And the other big issue is.
I've got about 15 seconds before I want to go to questions, so just.
My other big issue is code enforcement and how that has been been occurring in Yardley. There's a lot of issues. A lot of people are concerned. The town's not looking the way it used to. And I think that there's a lot of easy fixes with that.
All right. All right, thank you. We are going to move on to questions now. And I'm not doing this in any particular order. It's just who I see first on my screen. So Mr. Ross, you are the lucky first one. Have any questions for Mrs. Perlmutter, Dr. Perlmutter?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Councilman Finer, you are the next one.
Thank you. Well, you know, you actually answered, Dr. Perlmutter, you actually answered some of the, what I was thinking to ask you, but I'm going to ask you to elaborate a little bit more, because there was more you wanted to say. So I have a three-part question for you, which is, on a scale of one to 10, how would you rate the overall performance of the current council? And what do you think could be better? And if you could name, you already did name some things, maybe get a little more specific in what you would do to improve the performance and raise that score.
The one being the lowest and 10 being the highest is?
Correct.
Okay, well, I, I would have to say three. And I think it's mainly because I talk to everyone, I talk to people, and they feel that there's no transparency. They're not sure if it's a communication issue or if it's an issue with trying to just not inform the public. Things, you know, that are put on Facebook and are not necessarily the real, like this meeting, for example, wasn't advertised anywhere. There was a mailing, an email that went out, but it wasn't on Facebook. Nobody knows who the applicants are. Many people aren't even aware that we're, we're replacing a councilperson. So that's just one example. But I think, again, the largest problem goes back to building, zoning and code enforcement. There is an issue with an arbitrary selection of how things are enforced. In fact, a number of things are obviously not enforced. And it's a first and foremost a public safety issue. I mean, you can go one block in either direction, and there's at least 10 violations, some really hazardous. There's, there's a home right now that is being renovated half a block from there that has asbestos flying all over the place with people in their strollers walking by. I don't understand why, when I see these things, that they're not being noticed. And there's also a feeling that there's a culture of cronyism involved with how code enforcement is enacted and that some people get preferential treatment and are overlooked and others aren't. And this has been an ongoing issue. It's really been going on a long time. But that's what I would say is probably transparency and zoning and code enforcement.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Mr. McCann. Do you have any questions for Dr. Perlmutter?
Yeah, so you'll be the third person we would appoint to this seat. Obviously, there is no pay. You're doing it on a volunteer basis. As a public figure, you could be subject to criticism on social media. You're part of a group, and you may have an idea, and you may not be able to persuade the rest of council to join. So how can you be, how can we be assured if you're appointed that you'll fill out the remaining term and you won't quit on the council or the borough?
That's a fabulous question. I can honestly tell you that I will not be bullied off the borough. I will not resign. I have everything that this borough could throw at somebody has occurred to me. I am looking out for this town. I love Yardley Borough. I, the first thing I would do the moment I got on would be to file a grant and take care of Reading Avenue. I think I have a lot of things to offer, and I don't scare easy. So you would never have to worry about me being concerned with criticism.
My only follow-up question is, you're also part of a group. So how well do you work with others? And do you find yourself to be collaborative? Can you speak to that?
I work with others all the time. I work on cases that have a lot of people. I've worked on, teamwork is a large part of what I've had to do. And I certainly understand that a democracy is a democracy. I mean, I will work with everyone. I also understand there's different personalities. But I think it's very good to have other opinions, not to have everything unanimous all the time. Even if you still vote the other way, I think it's really important to get another perspective from. And if the vote doesn't go my way, it doesn't. But at least I think I can represent a lot of voices in Yardley that have not been represented in a long time.
That's all I have. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Thompson.
Thank you. As I've communicated to all of the candidates by email, I think that we have a well-rounded council, but we could use some more financial acumen. So my questions are going to be finally pinpointed on that subject area. So my two questions would be, what is your opinion of the borough's financial health based on your review of our financial documents? And in, as we prepare the budget for next year, do you think that in order to balance the budget next year, we should make extensive cuts to spending or we should incrementally raise taxes?
Well, I definitely think you shouldn't raise taxes. And I've looked at the budget, and I really find a lot of very problematic things. Now, it wasn't broken down, which also is problematic. But I just don't understand, we have, on, on the budget, you had 172,000 going to borough management. That's per year. I'm not sure what it represents, but that's an awful lot of money for what people feel they're getting. There's also over 50,000 that's going to code enforcement, when we have a part-time code enforcement officer who also is our emergency manager, getting paid out of that and getting, other people getting paid out of the FEMA. I think the biggest problem with the budget is the engineering company. I think that you need to have bids on these projects. I mean, we've had the same company do the sidewalk project, the speed bumps and the Afton Avenue light. And there's been problems with every single one of them. And instead of bidding out that to other people, we pay them to fix the mistakes that they make. I think that a lot of money can be saved by really getting some more competitive things in here. And I surely, I am really concerned about the half million dollar loan. You had mentioned, because I go to every council meeting, and there's been mention that it's going to be used to renovate Borough Hall. So I don't, I, that's what I had heard. I mean, I thought that there were some badly needed renovations. I'm just concerned about the, how everything is being supervised. The FEMA money that came in, we could have raised twice the amount of houses. Half of that money. Half of that money went to consultants, consultants that were really, you know, I don't think even necessary. So that, I think, is a way to save money. And I'm really concerned with the pension ordinance that's about to be put through. We haven't seen it, never, never, hadn't even seen the half million dollar loan wasn't even posted till after it was voted on. So again, it just goes back to transparency, to most people in the town not even knowing, wanting to know and not getting this information. And I'm sure we're really good with taxes. That's an attractive thing with Yardley Borough. People move here because of the low taxes. If we start raising taxes when we can really just tighten our belts, especially in this economy, we have no idea what's coming down the road. So I think that we really need to look hard. When I looked at that budget, my first thought was it needs to be broken down more. I don't see salaries. I don't know what
Sorry, three minutes, so we can just put a pin in this one.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Segal-Morris.
Ms., Dr. Perlmutter, recently you published an article in which you compared the residents of Yardley to brainwashed useful idiots. Is that really how you view our townsfolk?
Actually, I was referring to, the council kind of looked bad in that article. And I was referring to people who, from out of town, who came to Black Lives Matter protests where resident restaurant owners who had just opened up had to shut down. Some had to hire armed guards. Some others were very
I really don't believe that's true. I don't believe any restaurants shut down.
It's true. I can give you the names of the people. It is true. The fact that you don't believe it's true doesn't mean it's not true. There was a lot of concern over that. The Black Lives Matter protest shut down a state road. There were, with what's going on right now, the restaurant owners and the businesses do not want that. They do not want that here. And they were very happy. I had a lot of feedback from that article. And it was, it was very positive.
You know, my daughter attended one of those protests and I believe one of the business owners was actually giving out bottles of water to the protesters. And I think that's one of the business owners you're saying had to shut down. So I'm going to have to disagree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Segal-Morris. I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Dr. Perlmutter, the article that Ms. Segal-Morris referred to, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of many who read it, was racist. It referred to Black Lives Matter protesters as brainwashed idiots who, quote, "took pleasure in degrading the white residents of Yardley." "As elected officials, we represent everyone in this community. And despite what people might joke about Yardley, this is a diverse community." I know because I knocked on most of the doors of the people that live here. Furthermore, you took pretty specific aim at me as a, quote, "activist with no roots in the community and ambitions to fundamentally transform our town." And it seems that the way I have transformed it was through an ordinance that protected LGBT people from discrimination in employment, for a moment of silence for those who died as a result of police violence, and for commemorating Juneteenth, which is a day that Black Americans celebrate as the end of slavery in America. I don't have a question here. I just want to say for the record that those things are disqualifying.
I would like to respond to that. You just accused me of being a racist. I would like to respond to that. First of all, you don't have deep roots. You don't own property in the community. And that affects how you vote on things. The accusation of racism, let me be very clear. I moved here 28 years ago and I had offers from a number of colleges to teach. I moved here to teach at Princeton University. I chose to teach at a historically black college and university where I obtained my tenure, where I still am in touch with many of my students who are now high-ranking officers in the Philadelphia Police Department. So this, I know you're upset and you don't take criticism well, obviously. But to call someone a racist because they wrote an article about Black Lives Matter is just not, it's just not good government.
You are certainly entitled to your opinion. Thank you, Dr. Perlmutter. Mayor Harding, if you have any questions, you may now take the floor for three minutes.
Thanks, Council President. I'm good. I'm going to just listen. I've been listening to all the questions. I'm going to do the same on all the applicants, but thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Dr. Perlmutter. As the procedure I outlined at the beginning of this interview process, you will have two minutes for closing remarks.
As I said before, unlike the other applicants, I have attended every meeting. I am very involved in the community. I listen to people's views. I see a number of things walking through the community. I have skills that would be very useful to the borough. I can write grants. I really want to write something for Reading Avenue. I thought it was a disgrace that they, that didn't go through. And I will not be, you know, if you choose me, there's no way I'd resign. I have very thick skin and there's a number of things I can help with.
I was on mute there. Thank you very much. We will continue. So Paula, we can do our shuffling of breakout rooms.
So Matt will be next, correct?
Correct.
Matt, you're up.
Hey, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin. You've done this before, but I will briefly go through the procedure that we're following tonight, which is similar to last time. We will give you about two or three minutes to make an opening statement. I will then allow each council member an opportunity to ask you some questions. And then at the end, you will have an opportunity for some closing remarks. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to meet with you again. You know, look, I think I've demonstrated I've got an interest in being involved. And I think I have skills, you know, that could be additive to council. So, you know, just to go through my background again, for people who aren't as familiar. I'm 44. I grew up here, you know, grew up in Lower Makefield, went to Pensbury, Penn State. Live on Main Street, have lived in the borough since 2009 and in the area, you know, for almost my entire life. I work at Bank of America Merrill Lynch in investment banking, where I do credit syndication and help companies raise capital in the bond market. So a lot of what I do is income statement, cash flow analysis. You know, I have three kids who go to Pensbury and I'm pretty involved, you know, in their lives, coaching sports and all their activities. I'm vice commissioner of the Pensbury Athletic Association, which is baseball and softball for Lower Makefield and Yardley. And I'm on the board of the Business School at Penn State, the Finance Advisory Board. So I've got a lot of experience working in a not-for-profit context. You know, as I said, I have a background in finance. I have an MBA from Wharton. And I think I have a good demeanor. I like working in teams. And I think I have a good demeanor, you know, to join council. I appreciate the fact that, you know, I would be coming in as the last person on the team and someone who was chosen by council to help fill a role, maybe for a specific set of skills or to solve a problem, as opposed to someone who was generally elected, you know, by all the people in the community with maybe arguably a broader mandate. And so I have no agenda other than trying to come in and be helpful. I also think selfishly I would learn a lot. It would be a good experience and it would feel good, you know, being able to contribute in the community in another way that I think I would be additive. So that's my elevator speech.
All right, thank you. For questions, we'll go in the same order as we did for our first candidate. So Mr. Ross, you are up first.
I don't have any questions. I asked them all last time. So just want to add that he has a pretty awesome name, though. So that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Finer.
So something that has caught my eye, Mr. Curtin is, or let me call you Matt, is that what you said about cash flow. I used to be, in my previous term on council, I used to be the chair of the general government. And we implemented, I found that we needed more financial statements and more financial visibility. So we implemented improvements, which I would say, you know, have made things much clearer. And we're limited because we have to pay for that level of analysis and creation of statements. My question for you is just, it caught my eye, the degree to which you have experience between your educational background and your business experience and what you just mentioned with analyzing cash flow. These would be very, very useful things for us to get without having to hire, you know, additional time from CPAs. And obviously, you know, there's only so much a council person can do. I'm just curious if you could elaborate a little bit on your ability to, do you have the ability and the bandwidth to create statements like that for the borough or
Sure.
looking at them or
Yeah, look, I would say a couple of things. You know, I work in Excel and evaluate work that's done in Excel every day as a part of my job. And as an earlier part of my career as an analyst, I was building financial models all day. That's kind of what you do, you know, working with companies on the sell side. What I would say is, you know, in general, accounting can be hard for people that don't have exposure to it to understand. I think municipal accounting is extremely difficult. And if you think about, or you follow whatever happened over in Lower Makefield with the change over the business manager and the confusion of everyone understanding what the difference between what the balances were and accounts and what the actual cash flow was. And even the explanations that they made to try and educate everybody, it's really complex. And so, you know, what I would commit to doing is working with whoever else in council is a part of this and is closer to it today to try and figure out how to simplify and explain and make more transparency. I don't know that the best way to do that would be to recreate financial statements, particularly in a municipal context, because there's certain ways that, you know, you have to present things. But I'm all for, you know, better explanation and more clarity. And look, we do a lot of that frankly for PAA, you know, with baseball. We get a lot of questions from people of, what's it cost? Why is it cost? What the cost is? What are your expenses? You know, where does a fundraising go? And we've had to really dumb things down. I don't consider that as much financial statement analysis as I do just basic, here's the cash and here's where it went. Here's a very simple presentation that's easy for people to kind of understand. So I think this is kind of somewhere in between that in terms of what you're asking. But yeah, I would, I think I would enjoy a project like that and I would enjoy working with Paula or whomever the right people are on something like that.
Thank you. Yeah, just to quickly follow up, I think there are three areas that stick in my mind. One of them is that municipal budgets are done on an annual basis, but we often have to have a longer-term view. And we don't have a way to, we don't really have financial modeling for that. So that's kind of interesting, too, is that because of the convoluted way that municipalities report their finances, the layperson can't figure out what's going on. So any help on that side is helpful. And then, of course, just cash flow, because it's also, it's hard to tell sometimes what's going on. So anyway, thank you very much for elaborating on that. I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. McCann.
Yeah, so my question goes to, you'll be the first, third person that would be filling this seat. Obviously, we don't want to come back here and do it a fourth time. Anyway, you know, it's a volunteer position, obviously, but you'll be a public figure. You could be subject to criticism on social media. You know, you're part of a group and we may not all agree and you may not be able to pass what you want to pass through this council. So my question for you is, you know, how will we be assured that you're going to stick it out? You're not going to quit on us or the borough is the first question.
Sure. Well, look, I probably have to hold out for more money or a new contract. I can assure you that that is not in the cards. Look, I've wanted, I've applied three times, right? So, you know, and completely respect the decision that people have made of who the right person was for the job at the time, right? I think I have skills that would be additive and it's something that I want to do. I think I've got a commitment to sticking with organizations and I've advanced within those organizations because I've stuck with it and added value. And I will also say candidly, one of the most attractive things about this to me is, you know, it's effectively a year and a third commitment, right? I mean, I'm filling a term that's, you know, will be up. And the commitment asked for me is to come in and sprint, you know, for that period of time to make an impact with no longer-term commitment beyond that. And so the challenge is, look, if you're going to make an impact and you're going to really get into this, you got to hit the ground running because you don't have a lot of time. But the upside is, or the benefit is, you know, you can, you can give that commitment knowing that there's a light at the end of the tunnel to the extent you've got other things you have going on in your life as we all do.
And then my second question, it just goes to the idea of collaboration. You're part of this group, which is really important. But you're also the face of this group to the community. You work with community members in different groups. So can you speak to your collaborative skills in your group and how you work with others?
Yeah, sure. Look, you know, I, my job is a team-based collaborative approach. You know, I run a team for healthcare financing for the bank and a team of eight people. Our transactions and everything are sort of, you know, senior-led, but, you know, teams of five to eight people that work on every deal and we collaborate together. I think more broadly, you know, locally, you know, I coach my son's travel baseball team. I've been the head coach the last five years. I'm a soccer and basketball coach for both of my daughters. Those are incredibly involved positions from the aspect of dealing with parents and managing, you know, children, you know, young people. And I've also risen to get, to be on board. So I'm on the board of Pensbury Athletic Association. We've got a lot of different constituents with a lot of different, maybe interests. We've got travel players. We have in-house players. We have people that live in Lower Makefield and pay certain taxes and people that maybe live in some other places and pay different taxes to the township and different requests around field usage and capital commitments and fundraising. And I think I'm a good listener, right? And I don't really have an agenda other than, you know, I'm trying to, you know, raise my kids in the town I grew up in and have a good experience for all of us. And I kind of come at this with that spirit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
So as I communicated to all the candidates prior to the interviews, I am looking for a candidate to round out the board. And I think we're in need of more financial acumen, which you've also already spoken to a little bit. But I specifically wanted to know your opinion of the borough's financial health as it stands. And looking at next year, we'll have to decide between, to balance the budget between making significant cuts or an incremental tax increase. So I'm wondering your opinions on those two options. Please be as specific as possible.
Yeah, for sure. So, you know, I appreciate you giving me a heads up that this is something that you were focused on. And, you know, had access to a lot of information to prepare, you know, for this. So that was super helpful. You know, look, I was involved in attending council meetings on a more active basis, you know, around the 2016 period of time, when the earned income tax proposal was up and we had a lot of meetings, some of which were in the community center because of the amount of interest at the time around what was the right way, you know, to fund the budget and what was the right way. We hadn't had a tax increase for an extended period of time. The millage had not been increased and rainy day funds had been depleted. And there were a number of capital projects that wanted to be put in place. And, you know, what I think my view living here is only reinforced by, you know, talking to people over the last week and, you know, looking at the information that was available is, we don't really have an expense problem. We have a revenue problem. You know, part of the revenue problem is that your revenues are largely, either in one case stagnant, the millage, right? That's based on property assessments. Or volatile in the sense of episodic payments that come from real estate and other things. Now, over the long run, over a two-year period. I think those are highly predictable, but in any quarter to quarter period, those are highly episodic. And so, you know, I think, you know, one way to. Have an inflationary revenue line that's more in keeping with the inflationary cost of your expenses would be to move to something like taxing income. I think we heard loud and clear that there's not a lot of appetite for that in the borough and I'm not in favor of it because. Of the dynamics of how an earned income tax credit work with, once someone adopts it. They'll likely follow on and how much revenue you actually get and the first mover disadvantage in some ways. So. I am in favor of millage increases. You know, I think we've, you know, the increase we had from. 2016 to 2017 was the first one in extended period of time and we haven't had one since. You know, looks like, you know, from the math I did and the information we sent, a one mil increase is about $35,000 in revenue. It seems to me that we don't have any pressing, if I say the budget is roughly balanced, right? You can't say that there's a pressing need for millage for expenses other than the fact that you've probably deferred some expenses and you've mad at you've squeezed costs, which we've obviously done. And so there's probably some amount of pent up cost, but I think more than that, what we really need is. Increased funding to replenish both rainy day funds and long-term, you know, capital improvement enhancement type stuff. And I think we talked. The second time that I came before council, I think in January. About the idea of like long-term planning to help sell it and that the idea of a millage increase. You know, of some amount, maybe it's, you know. One, two mils, some of it for, you know, just the general cost of operating the. The government of the borough and some amount that's for long-term capital improvement, rainy day fund, et cetera. Would be a good way to do it. And I'm not sort of wed to, you know, one or 2%. I don't really feel informed enough to tell you what the right level is. It feels like at least two mils is probably appropriate.
You're in the range. Yeah.
That's sort of the way I would see it and, you know, I can't commit to vote any way down the road as we speak today, right? But I would say that in general, after everything I looked at, it feels reasonable that, you know, we would need a tax increase. And if that's reasonable, it's something. I would support because I'm not philosophically against it on the merits.
Thank you. That's all I need.
Ms. Segal Morris.
I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. I am up next and I believe we touched on this last time during your interview and you did allude to it earlier, but for the record. Would you, if pointed to the seat, run for election in the 2021 cycle?
Well, I don't have any intention of doing that. You know, I would say to you, I don't really like the idea of campaigning. I don't frankly think I have the time to do that. Or raising money or any of that stuff. So my intention right now is not to, you know. Stand for any type of primary or run as an independent or be on the ballot. I also not sure that that would go well with my employer. That they would be, they're okay with an appointed position. I don't know that they're crazy about an elected one. But I would say just in complete transparency, if this is fun and it's going well, and I think that it's important and that I can add some value, I do want to keep the door open, but I also. That's a hedge that I think is unlikely. My kids are young, you know, Will's 12, Piper's 10, Molly's seven. I got a lot going on with them. This is something I want to do. But I think it's something I want to do for a finite period of time and do some other stuff with them too.
So, all right, thank you. That's all I have. And Mayor Harding, if you have anything.
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curtin. If you'd like to make some closing remarks, you can do so now.
No, look, I appreciate it. Thank you guys for the opportunity and yeah, we'll see how it goes. But again, thanks for the time.
All right. Thank you. Paula, if you could shuffle our applicants once again.
Hi there.
Hey, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Thank you. Welcome back. You've done this with us before, but I'm going to go through the process just so we're clear on everything. We'll begin, give you two to three minutes to make some opening remarks. I will then allow each member of council to ask. A few questions and at the end of all of that, you will be able to make a closing statement. So with that, I will turn it over.
Great. So thank you, councilpersons for having me this evening. I know that probably everyone is remotely familiar with me, given that I ran for appointment in February, except for Councilman Finer. So congratulations, Councilman Finer. Also, I'll just be brief in this. I'm a 12-year resident of Yardley Borough. Have lived both in the floodplain and then now on West College Avenue. Married with two kids, six and nine, who will be remotely attending Corey Hill Elementary, at least for the foreseeable future. My background is as a consumer healthcare marketer, primarily though as a general manager. With Johnson and Johnson. I was there for 19 years and then left last year to pursue my dream of entrepreneurialism. I actually founded a healthcare startup. We launched this month. And, you know, really have been busy with that over the summer. Looking forward to starting the year and continuing my active participation. Most importantly, with Girl Scouts. I'm a Girl Scout leader of a local troop. I work with local animal rescue organizations as well as community aid organizations such as Neighbor in Need. So really. Looking forward to expanding my service to the community in a role on Yardley Borough Council. And it really has come full circle for me. I came to obviously the borough in 2008 and I distinctly remember driving down West Afton and. Glancing over at the lake and thinking, this is where I want my forever home to be. So I'm really happy to be able to finally give back to the place that I call home.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ross, you're up first.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Finer.
So I think I would love to know. How you feel. What your sense is of the current areas, an area that you feel that council could improve on. Could most improve on and what you would do if you were on council to make that happen.
I actually think, given the circumstances, council has done tremendously well and I don't say that lightly. I love the continuity of effort around the capital improvements and, and the securing of funds, whether it be through grants. Or, you know, most recently the line of credit to pursue projects that quite frankly, I've heard about since I moved to Yardley. And so I really appreciate the. The gumption of this council to continue. What disappoints me most, I think, is, is the cohesion and, you know, the, I'd say the resignations that I've seen. I don't know that that lies on the shoulders of any one particular person. And I think this council deserves some continuity. And continued support for the work that it's doing and representation of our residents. So for me personally, you know, I want to do a lot of listening in the beginning to understand how I might be able to contribute, given the unique skills that I bring. And further the efforts to build our community.
Thank you. And as a follow-up to that, just us as a person who's been involved in my fair share of entrepreneurial pursuits myself. Obviously, you wouldn't be here if you didn't think you had the time, but do you, could you, could you just elaborate on, you know, as you're probably going to hear from other. Council people here, we, we don't want to be going through this again. So could you, could you give us some assurance about your availability and your ability to. To meet the time demand, time, yeah, time demands of the role?
Of course. So actually, you were the only person that didn't have the opportunity to hear my perspective on this, Councilman Finer, in February. Which is, is that part of the reason I stepped forward in February was because I weighed both my current commitments. Against the available time and passion I had for where I wanted to put my energy. My children are getting a little bit older and more self-sufficient. I find myself contributing to the community but wanting to do more. And honestly, this summer has been fantastic one because even with the challenge of COVID, I feel like I've been able to advance all the things that I have prioritized now. And still have room for opportunity. So I said it then in February and I say it again, is that by raising my hand, I've already done that kind of check with myself to make sure that I have the time. And the energy and the passion and the fortitude to contribute.
Thank you.
Mr. McCann.
Yeah, Councilperson Finer kind of stole my first question, so.
Sorry.
Going to ask about, we just didn't want to point so on the fourth time for this seat, but basically the other facet of my, the other part of my question I was going to ask about is. You know, obviously, this is a group dynamic. You're to work with not only us, but people in the community. So can you speak to your. Ability to collaborate and work with others well?
Yeah, sure. I think what's most important in any new or changing situation, which quite frankly, whether you've been with a team for two or three years or whether you're new to a team. This really holds true is your ability to listen first and understand, seek to understand. What is the primary goal of the team that you're on? How might you be able to contribute to that goal? And then ultimately make sure that you're clearing pathways for that team to be successful. And so in my mind, you know. I've done this before a million times in the work environment. I've done it personally as it relates to continuing the efforts of our Girl Scout troop. Managed them for four years now and have a variety of personalities, but ultimately, I think you have to recognize that everyone wants to help and everyone wants to contribute in some ways and your job. As a leader is really to recognize what those unique skills are and contributions that they bring and then harness those. To, you know, to create a more cohesive and. Beneficial group environment. And, you know, I have a multitude of experiences in the past that I've, that I've been able to do that.
Thank you.
David had to step away. Sorry, he has some personal things going on this evening. So I think I'm next. Vicky, I would like to ask you about the borough's financial health. I, I reached out to you prior to this interview and sent you some documentation. I'm curious about how you feel the borough is doing financially and in the coming year, we're going to have to make a decision to balance the budget, budget between. Cost decreases or incremental tax increases. So I would like to know your opinion on those two options.
Sure. So it is an initial blush at the budget, obviously, having not spoken to the people that are working directly with the budget. My initial sense is that the revenue situation, actually, you know, one of the biggest things when I approach any sort of budget or P and L is to say, what are your biggest drivers? Whether it's drivers of cost or drivers of revenue, because, you know, you can look at the smaller things and those are important, but the reality is whether it's your personal budget or. Or business budget, or in this case, a municipal budget, you have to go after the bigger items. And so I applaud council for the recent work in establishing a volunteer, I'm paraphrasing, police force, because that is the number one expenditure. Outside of projects. So what I've also noticed is that the number one revenue driver is taxes. Which is great because actually, when you look at it as a percentage of total revenue, it's about 45%. And uh-huh, first blush at what other municipal, local governments have. They're really reliant on taxes upwards to 60 to 70% of their total revenue. So I actually don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. We may have some room. For increasing of taxes in a responsible way to be more in line with a really diverse revenue generation budget. But I also think too, that this variability in projects and then the grants associated with that funding is really what seems to be on first blush again. What's resulting in the imbalances of the budget year on year. And so I think that the work that the team is doing around a really cohesive, long-term strategic plan is important because that lays out what our goals are. And then we can budget and plan appropriately. And I love the line of credit too, because that's actually what's going to help us get, it seems. Some reliability in the granting process and ultimately consistently fund these projects, which seem to be again, the biggest driver of variability in our expenses.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Segal Morris.
Yeah, um, could, if you're appointed to council, could you describe a goal you would like to achieve and why that is important to you?
Yes, so my goals have, have changed slightly. So my stated priorities in, in February. Were around executing first and foremost, the stated priorities of council, which I think remain, right, the replacement of the Yardley, Mary Yardley Footbridge, excuse me, the second phase of North Main Street, which is primarily focused on securing the funding gap. That still needs to be solved to complete that project. And then the grants associated with that. And I think. Making sure that we have a consistent way to fund those priorities and partnering with the work that the teams are doing around budgeting to do that. But then I think secondarily, examining what's the role that pedestrian safety and traffic calming continues to have in our long-term. Plan as well as continued floodplain advocacy. So I'm not as familiar with where we are in the CRS discounting, but certainly at least maintaining our CRS discount, but then trying to achieve. A greater discount will ultimately help in our continued advocacy for the 40% of our residents that are in the floodplain.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm up next. I'm asking this to everyone. If appointed to the seat, would you run for election in the 2021 cycle?
That would be my plan. Yes, this is certainly a long-term commitment for me. I explained in February that quite frankly, I came within, you know, days of being able to make. The primaries, you know, the primary election season. So this is, this is an aspiration I have and certainly the ability to, to get in sooner. Than a main election would allow, really affording an opportunity to just contribute more. So yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Harding.
Nope, nothing, David. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to make a closing remark?
Sure. So as I have indicated in the past, I really think, one, it would be a distinct pleasure to serve the residents of Yardley Borough. And always, it's been in my heart since I explained that, that moment that I drove in on West Afton Avenue. But I also really want to reassure this team and look forward to the opportunity to contribute in a meaningful way. By both whether it's bringing some of the business and financial acumen that I had experienced in the private sector. Or really rolling up my sleeves and executing the work that's planned this year. I really want to be a member of this team. And look forward to the opportunity to do that alongside of all of you.
All right. Thank you so much. Paul is going to, again, juggle our breakout room. Okay, Mr. Moan is up next. Can you hear us? Can we hear you? Are we good on the tech side?
I can hear you.
All right, perfect. You've done this before, but I'm just going to quickly overview our procedure for tonight. We'll give you an opportunity, two to three minutes to make an opening statement. Each member of council will then have a few moments to ask you questions. And at the end, you'll have an opportunity for a closing statement. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Hi, David. I've lived in the, I'm Dan Moan. I live on Longshore Avenue. I've lived in the borough since about 2001. Initially, I lived on Harper Avenue, but then we purchased a home a few years later on Longshore. I live here with my wife, who served many years on the planning commission. My one teenage, one teenage junior in high school. We also have four chickens, six rabbits, three cats. So we're one big happy family. The reason that, a couple of reasons that I'm interested in serving the remainder of Ryan's term. Number one is a, as you probably know, I have an interest in the floodplain ordinance. I know we've had several community meetings about that and I'm. Looking forward to potentially helping move that, some of those changes forward. I've also been involved in the Reading Avenue project. I know we've got some action to take to clean that site up. So I'm real interested in getting involved in that. And the other item is. The elevation projects through FEMA. I think it's very important to the borough that. We do what we can to move those projects along. And when I was on council prior, that was my. And when I was on council prior, that was my, one of my main things when I was on for four years was a lot of the flood mitigation stuff. So those things are real important to me. I've also served on the Public Safety, Public Works, Public Outreach Committee. So I'm very familiar with the operations of Borough Council. And I feel like I can hit the ground running without having to go through a extended, extended period where I have to get familiar with everything. And that's my opening statement.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ross.
I have no questions. I asked all my questions the last time.
Keeping it simple. Mr. Finer.
So I think I actually, you know, we know each other, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump right to something specific. Here, let me give you a chance to elaborate a little bit on this one area and just like to get your, your thoughts on what you'd like, what would you do specifically regarding the floodplain ordinance reform while maintaining the CRS rating that obviously our residents need to, what we need to do for our residents?
Yeah, and that's, that's an important part of redoing the ordinances is ensuring that we're not going to lose any type of discounts that we're receiving and perhaps to maybe even increase the discounts potentially. Now, I reviewed the CRS documentation that FEMA puts out in pretty much in a lot of detail. And, you know, some of the items that we could potentially get discounts for, you know, a lot of the big percentages are not really options that are open to us. For example, a big way to get discounts is to purchase open space. Well, there's not a whole lot of open space, you know, remaining in the borough. But, you know, I've worked with FEMA and PMA in the past. They're huge bureaucracies. And, you know, I feel like I was successful along with other council members and other local leaders in getting things that benefited Yardley Borough done, either acquisitions or elevation projects, or, you know, just allocation of money for elevations. You know, when we first started, that wasn't a thing. So, but I do believe that, you know, we do need to, where allowable, loosen up some of the restrictions that we have in place. I don't believe that those, a lot of, some of these restrictions are contributing at all to our CSR points. And I think that they're really impacting the quality of life in the floodplain without any real benefit as far as property damage. You know, one of the things that I always like using as example is my two neighbors to the side of me back when the floodplain ordinances were not as restrictive as they are now, which is prior to 2014. They did additions on their house, but one of the requirements was that they elevate those additions. And so if you look at the back of their house, they have the front of their house and then their addition is actually above the hundred-year floodplain. So there's no potential property damage. There's no exposure for FEMA. There's no exposure for the homeowners. And a lot of the, a good number of houses in our, in our neighborhoods in the floodplain, at least on the, at least on my side of the, of Afton, are smaller homes. And we've had a lot of issues where people, young couples have moved into the borough only to leave because they haven't been able to reasonably expand their, their properties. And that's also hurting our, all of our property values here in the floodplain. So, you know, so those are the types of things that, and we had a lot of community meetings on this and I think we had reached, you know, a consensus on a lot of these issues. And that we were at the point where we were going to approach FEMA and PMA to ensure that we weren't going to have the CSR issues. Obviously, the pandemic has probably delayed that. And so I think it's something that we need to get back on the agenda as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, it was very helpful. And, you know, regardless of whether you end up being on council or not, I think it's an issue that should be looked at. So thank you.
Mr. McCann.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, you would be the third person serving out the seat. We don't want to have to do it for, for a time. So why don't you kind of give us, you know, your commitment, talk about your commitment to this and finishing out this term?
Yeah, I don't believe that's going to be an issue. You know, I come into this knowing exactly what to expect. I've been through it before. As I recall, I probably, on average, put fifteen or twenty hours a week when I was on council. You know, it's almost a part-time job. So my expectation is that, you know, that type of workload would continue. And I wouldn't have applied if I couldn't put the time in to make it happen. I'm not selling my house. My, my daughter's in her third year of high school, so we're not moving. Changed her school, so I'm, I think I'm pretty stable as far as being able to complete Ryan's term.
All right. And then just secondly, you know, obviously, you're working with a group, not only with us, but also members of the community. So can you please speak to your collaborative skills and how you work with others?
Sure. You know, when I was on for four years, if you ask anyone who served with me, they'll tell you that I was a hard worker, that I was organized, that I communicated well with others. In fact, when I was a committee chair, I would publish agendas and I would publish minutes to make sure that I was keeping everyone in detail in the loop as far as other council members and the public as well as to the, as to the types of things that we were doing. You know, one of the golden rules that we used to have, I don't know if we have this anymore, but if your committee was going to bring something forward, the only way to do it was to get both committee, subcommittee members to, to agree that a particular item, you know, should be considered by council. So, so I have worked collaboratively, collaboratively with others in the past and I have no problem doing that into the future.
Thank you.
No problem, John.
Thompson.
So as I've communicated to all the candidates, I'm finally focused on trying to find someone who's going to increase our financial acumen on council. I think it's something we really need to focus on as we're strategizing for the future. So can you just give us your quick thoughts on the financial health of the borough? And also, I know I sent you the budget, looking to next year, we're either going to have to make significant cuts to expenses or we're going to have to incrementally raise taxes to balance the budget. So I'm curious on your opinion of those two options. Please be as specific as possible.
Sure. Yeah, I did take a look at the budget that was online. And obviously, that's just a snapshot. But a couple of things on there make me nervous. And number one is the real estate transfer tax. It's obviously completely underperforming what was budgeted. And that's not something that necessarily will recover. I know a few homes have sold here recently in the borough, but I don't see any kind of mass listing of, of houses going on. So, you know, that's something that, that we're probably not going to make up this particular year. It probably won't be as bad as what it is right now, but I would bet it's not going to be much worse. And then, you know, obviously, we're on the, on the real estate tax side. Now, that all comes in generally in the April timeframe normally, April, May. So it's a little concerning that it's over a hundred thousand dollars under budget. I'm assuming that's very much related to COVID. But from a, from a more long-term perspective, you know, that may work itself out as, you know, those taxes that people may owe and have postponed, you know, they don't go away. At some point, hopefully, within the next year or so, we'll be able to collect those. So, but that, that's definitely a cash flow issue, right? Because that cash that we would normally have, we don't have it now. So as far as the deficit, right, I think, you know, my experiences told me that, you really need to dig into the expenses. I mean, these are all very high-level things. But I recall, you know, when we were doing budgets, sitting with Bill Winslet, who was then Borough Manager, and really going line by line through all the expenses, saying, all right, can we put this off for a year? Can we not put this off for a year?
We do that, right, Paula?
Yeah. And so, you know, I'm sure you're doing that type of analysis. I'd like to see maybe the budget, after the analysis is done, see the budget for 2020 revised with those potential savings to give a clear picture of really where we are. And then the other portion of that that we really need to look at is the cash flow implications of all that. I don't know, probably that's something that you make public or I'm not sure if you've done the cash flows or not. But in a circumstance like this, you know, you really need to understand what those potential cash flows are. And then, you know, going through your capital projects and, you know, earlier you talked about fixing the trash cans, right? You know, those types of things in a downturn, obviously, they just, they're not fiscally responsible to do those types of things. So, you know, my experience with budgets is that number one, you know, it's not really, you know, business experience is good, right? But we're not really running a business. It's a government agency. And I've found that, you know, the only way to get a really understanding of your budget is to dig in really deep. And that's something that I'm willing to do to help understand it. As far as your question about tax increases, I really want to understand the yearly expense, recurring expense versus, versus revenue, because, you know, that's going to give you a picture, take out all the capital projects, that's going to give you a real picture that's going to determine, you know, if you're running a deficit from a revenue expenditures standpoint, you know, on a recurring basis, that's going to be a problem. You know, I'm concerned about a tax increase from the standpoint of we're almost maxed out where we'd have to go to court in order to start, you know, having some, some of those things going through. So I would always say that, you know, that's kind of the last resort. It's not really the last resort because there are some expenses that you can't get rid of. You can't get rid of the police expense. You can't get rid of the Borough Manager. So I just don't know enough about all those underlying numbers. I know it's not good from what I see here. But I just don't know, you know, if there are items in there that could be conceivably, you know, pushed back. And really, you know, the, the, the real estate numbers will come back. It's, it's the, you know, the seventy thousand that we're going to end up being short in the transfer tax that really sticks out in my mind. And the other, the other thing that sticks out in my mind is looking at.
Okay, Dan, just do like fifteen seconds to wrap up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, the other thing that sticks that, you know, factored into that is the, the line of credit that you guys just got. I'm not suggesting that we spend that on, on daily expenses. However, I think we really need to look at that in the context of the next couple of years and what its effect is, as well as the capital projects priority that that's going to go to. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Segalmars.
I believe between February and today, I have my questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moan, my question for everyone is the same here. If appointed to the seat, would you plan on running for election in the 2021 cycle?
I did think about this and I'm just not sure if I would or not. You know, I've already been through two campaigns in the last couple of cycles. You know, that takes a lot out of me. But if, you know, if the floodplain ordinance doesn't look like it's going anywhere or, you know, some other thing that is important to me, doesn't appear to be moving forward, you know, I would probably, that would probably factor into whether I would or not. But I just don't know whether I would or not.
Gotcha. It's good fun, isn't it?
It is not good fun. I mean, it's, there are good parts of it, right? Getting out, meeting your neighbors, those are a good, those are a good part of it, but a lot of the other stuff, not so much.
I'm with you. All right, thank you. And Mayor Harding.
No, I'm good. But thank you, council president.
All right, thank you. Give you a moment for some closing remarks.
I appreciate you taking the time to talk to me and I just want to assure you that, should you appoint me, that I have the time and knowledge to, to be an effective council member over the next year at a minimum.
Thanks so much. Hi, Mr. Levine, are you with us?
Hello?
All right, give you a minute to get settled there.
All right, thanks.
Yep, take your time. And while you do that, I'll just quickly go over the procedure we're following tonight. You'll have two to three minutes to make an opening statement. After that, each member of council will have about three minutes each to ask you questions and allow for responses. And then at the end, you'll have an opportunity for a closing remark. Someone's there, I'll turn it over to you and you can begin with your opening statement for us.
Okay. Do you see the, do you see my video yet?
Yeah, we can see it.
On your forearm.
All right, and, all right, so, all right, so if you can see and hear me. All right, well, my name is Brad Levine. I lived in the borough for six years. Moved here from New Jersey and I love it here. It's my, my, one of my favorite places really that I could have imagined living. Worked very hard to, to move here and I think for that reason, I'm very interested in helping preserve the character of Yardley. I will straight up say, one of my motivations is I'm generally opposed to new development. I, I really would like to keep Yardley, the small, nice, beautiful town it is, to the degree I can and to the degree I can help with that. That being said, I, you know, I'm not opposed to, you know, somebody, you know, you know, people improving their own properties and things like that. But I certainly want to keep the, the borough. I want to keep its charm and it's, and it's wonderful character that originally attracted me to, to the borough. As, as far as qualifications, this is my, my first run at any kind of governmental position. I, I'm an IT guy by trade, so I'm good with working with tech. I'm good with numbers. I, I have a little bit of managerial experience at the company I'm with. I work for a company by the name of PCS Technologies. We're a managed services provider. And I, for, for a time, I was an interim help desk manager there. And I managed mostly the people and a lot of the technology. I managed like a four-person help desk. There wasn't a whole lot of budgetary. There wasn't a whole lot of budgetary issues in that. That was just more like kind of keeping, you know, you know, making sure everybody was doing their jobs. But I, but that's, you know, I think, I'd like to think at least that might help a little bit as far as qualifications go. As far as, as far as the bullet points relevant to Yardley, I already spoke about my interest in preserving the town's character. I do, I would like to promote a sense of fiscal responsibility. I, I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, just because we may be able to afford to do something or not afford to do something doesn't necessarily mean I want to do something. Doesn't necessarily mean I don't. I, interesting statement that Caroline made earlier today is, is doing some of these projects in the middle of a pandemic. That's something I would, I would tend to be a little averse to right now. And as you can.
30 seconds to wrap up, Mr. Levine.
Okay. All right. All right, well, I mean, I really don't have, have much else to say. That was sort of like my, my quickie, you know, meet me, sales pitch. But I certainly invite any questions and any like, you know, any cases of, any questions as what would you do in this situation?
All right, thank you. With that, we'll first go to Mr. Ross.
I only have one question. What areas would you be most interested in, like boards and commissions and things working with on council?
Well, as far as a board, probably planning, just planning and, you know, planning future projects and planning on what we're going to do. You know, as far as, you know, like, you know, zoning and, and planning commission. I think that would probably be the most interesting. I think I, again, I think, I, I have a, like, kind of an idea of where I think, you know, how I'd like things to go and I'd like to have like a little bit of input and, and like to see what other people, you know, what other people's rationales for, for, for taking Yardley in certain directions. If that makes any sense.
Great, thank you.
And I had some notes up here and I can't find them.
All right, thank you. We'll go to Mr. Finer next.
Okay.
So you, you mentioned, you know, an interesting point that I want to get a little bit more deeper in with you about fiscal responsibility versus the need to do projects, especially ones that are underway.
Right.
And so like, for example, we have the Mary Yardley Bridge, which, you know, we don't know how much longer that bridge is going to last. And we have the North Main Street sidewalk, which has been in a, a project that has been in progress for over a decade. And this need to connect the borough. At the same time, we have this, you know, impending deficit COVID situation. And, and so, you know, this is, things are balanced. And I just want to get more of a sense from you. Are you saying that you wouldn't do anything? Are you saying that you do everything? Are you saying that, you know, give us more of a sense of how you would handle that?
The sidewalk in particular, one thing that, that, one of the questions I have about the sidewalk is, do all the people on North Main Street even want it? That's, that's a question.
I don't think there's any project inside the entire borough where you're going to get everybody in an area that wants something. But that was voted on, you know, in many years ago, so.
But is it something that, that people really want? Or is it something that is something we can take our time with? That's something I don't know. And that's something I want to be able to, to make an informed decision about. I'm not going to say, you know, categorically yes or no unless I have an idea. But one of the things that occurs to me is, I've lived in places where people don't necessarily want a sidewalk. They don't necessarily want people walking around in front of their house. They don't want to deal with the risk of people slipping on the sidewalk and suing them. I, I think that's something we have to consider. And that being the case, I don't think it's going to be a high priority. If, if, and that's a big if, there's a lot of people or majority of people who don't want it. It's, I think it would fall into like, maybe nice to have, but let's not rush it.
So just to follow up on that, because I want to understand your perspective. Just, you may not be aware of this because you're from a different part of town. But I happen to live in that part and I've been through many of the meetings. And there are only more young families with children that can't walk on North Main Street safely because there's no sidewalk. So in my view, that issue has been, you know, we've been there, done that. It's a matter of how to get it done, not if to get it done. So my question for you is, are you saying, knowing what I just told you, and obviously you'd have to look for yourself, but taking that at face value, are you saying you would want to reopen that whole conversation? Or were you looking or considering that? Would you still say, well, you know, you can't do it now, sorry. You know, you got to wait till your kids are older? I'm not asking with an agenda, I just kind of want to get, you know.
I think, I mean, I, I think I would want to at least get a sampling of, of different people in the area and just say, do you think this is a priority? Is this, is this important to you or do you not want it at all? If, and I think it's important to kind of like have a little bit of a pulse on what, what people want. If, if most people would like the sidewalk, and I could certainly understand it because I, because I've seen how dangerous it is to walk there before there was a sidewalk. And, you know, and it's not, you know, it's not, not a, not, not great there. But I just would want to know for sure if most people are on board with it. If most people are on board with it, okay, then I think it's something that could be done sooner rather than later. If most people are not on board with it, I think it's something that can be put on the back burner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Out of curiosity, Mr. Finer. So, but do you, do you have a perspective? Like, do you know, like, not just yourselves, but your neighbors too? Do most of them, most of them do support having a sidewalk there?
Well, it's a good question. To answer you, here and there, people know I'm on Borough Councils. So I run into my fellow neighbors, you know, walking on, on the street. There's more people than you think, especially with strollers and such. I would say the question I get most often is what's happening with the sidewalk? And the last time I had a conversation with somebody negative about the sidewalk was maybe four or five years ago. So that's, that's only from walking around. So I haven't taken a survey. I'm sure there are people out there. But I think a lot of that was resolved because there were issues with how the sidewalk was being planned. And thanks to Matt Ross here on council and, and the rest of council, a lot of that has been resolved and improved in a way that doesn't do weird things to people's properties. So anyway, that's, I don't want to get off topic too much. But yeah, I think generally it's pretty strong in favor of having a way to get to town.
Okay.
And I'll move on. Mr. Levine.
Yeah, I'll just.
Move on to Mr. McCann's questions.
Yeah, so real quick, you know, we've had some turnover on council. So, you know, there's a bit of a term left. So can you assure us that you're going to finish out this term before we appoint you? Do you speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can commit the time. One of the nice things about my job is I work from home. So I, I'm certain I can commit the time and I, I can stay, stay on the term. So I have no doubts about that.
And then secondly, you know, there's a group dynamic here. You have to work with people, collaborate and also work with the community. So speak to your collaboration skills and your ability to work as part of a team.
Well, I currently work with a pretty, pretty diverse team as it is. And I mean, I don't know really what to say about collaboration skills. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm open minded, I listen to other people. I tend to actually listen more than I talk, believe it or not. Because I like to be able to find out whether people's perspectives are and then make a decision. I mean, I, I do feel strongly about some things, but for the most part, I'm, I'm pretty good at listening to people. I'd say very good at listening to people. And, and I certainly would, would put my two cents in if I, if I felt strongly about a particular issue. I'm pretty, I'm a pretty easygoing guy. I'm, I'm not like really an in-your-face guy. I'm not going to, you know, and I'm not like, I'm not the kind of person who's going to, you know, I don't, I don't know really how to say this, but I'm, you know, I'm, I try to be very open-minded about things. I guess this is kind of where I'm going. And I try to be a listener and I try to be very respectful of other people. And I guess that's what I, as far as I could say is about collaboration. I mean, if you have any specifics on how I do it, you know, I, I tend to use a lot of tech. So, but.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Hope I was specific enough.
So Brad, I'm wondering about your opinion of the borough's financial situation. And in the coming year, I sent you the budget. We'll be trying to make the decision between making cuts in spending or incrementally raising taxes to balance the budget. So I'm curious what your opinion on those two options are. Please be specific.
Well, I mean, having looked at, again, there's still some devil in the details. And, and like the, another question I had is in the Mary Yardley Bridge. I mean, have we had an engineer look at it? Is it something that needs replacement now? Or is it something that can hold off a little bit? I really would not like to raise taxes. I'm not saying I'm religiously opposed to it, but I would prefer not to do that. I would, I would prefer to kind of put some of these projects on the back burner if it's possible. If they're important, if they're safety related, I can see a purpose of moving them to the front burner. But especially now with, with, with the COVID situation, I, you know, I don't think it's a good time to be investing in a lot of projects. I think maybe nine months from now, it's probably going to be a different story. And that being said, I, yeah, I mean, I, on the whole, I would tend to want to defer some of these projects, at least for, until next year and just see how, see how things shake out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Segal-Morris.
Mr. McCann asked you about collaborating with council members. And I'm wondering how you would, or what steps you would take to involve residents in council meetings or council decisions generate interest in council per se?
Well, I, I'm not on social media, but I do, I do have the abilities, technical, the technical and the know-how and the resources to put up micro, micro websites and email blasts to residents. Not sure, I, I don't know how much info we have, but, you know, on residents and how many email addresses and we have. But I try to engage as many people as I could, as I could realistically. And hopefully try to at least kind of get a pulse on, on what Yardley is thinking and try to get them interested in meetings and try to, try to alert them if there's a particularly, you know, particularly important issue that they should be aware. So I think, I think I rely on tech for a lot of these kinds of things. Probably, probably, you know, after the whole pandemic has blown over, and I'm hoping it does, I certainly probably would be more willing to go door to door at some point in the future. I've done that in the past. But, but yeah, like I said, I tend to rely on, on email blasts and putting up websites to try to get people, to get people's attention.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Levine. My question for you is, if appointed to this seat, would you seek election to the full term in the 2021 cycle?
I expect that I would, yes.
All right, thank you. Quick and easy, Mayor Harding.
Nothing at this time, thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you. And Paula, does that conclude or do we have one more? That concludes.
That's it.
All right, so I think with that, we could probably bring everyone back.
Okay.
If they're still hanging out there.
Okay. I think we got them all.
Hey. By the way, it looks like I'm wincing, it's not you. I hurt my foot the other day.
So, all right, I think everybody is here. So, having heard the full round of interviews, I will ask a member of council if they would like to make a motion at this time.
I would like to make a motion. I'll just say that I love the application process and getting to interview candidates. I feel like I get to know these people better than I do when I go to the ballot box. So that's a really, a special opportunity. It also makes it really hard because I feel very conflicted tonight. But I did come tonight with a goal of appointing the person that I think is most qualified to bring financial acumen to the table and to help us plan for the future and become more financially healthy. And I think that person is Matthew Curtin. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Matthew Curtin to the existing vacancy on council.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, second that.
All right, that motion is made by Councilwoman Thompson, seconded by Councilwoman Segal-Morris. At this time, we will allow for some discussion from council.
Mr. President, just one note of clarification. The Borough Code requires this to be done by resolution.
Ah.
Perhaps we could amend the motion to the effect of approving a resolution. And I forget what number we're on, on resolutions. Maybe Paula has that to appoint, you know, Mr. Curtin to fill the vacancy.
Thank you for that catch.
I, I'll wait for Paula to get the number.
I would like to say while we're waiting that while I agree that Matt is an excellent candidate, I think that Ms., sorry, Chawski is also a very strong candidate. And I really hope to see her running in the next election cycle.
Resolution would be 2007.
So I would amend my motion to appoint Matthew Curtin, or is it Matt Curtin? Is your full name Matthew? I'm not sure. Via resolution 20-07, is that what you said? I'm sorry, it's late.
Is, any objections to the friendly, to the memo? All right, with none, we now have a resolution on the floor to appoint Matt Curtin to the vacancy on council. So now we will return to our discussion. If any member of council would like to discuss, please chime in and do so.
I'm going to throw a couple of words in here. Having been appointed myself back earlier this year before all this COVID business started, I almost don't feel like I should vote on, on appointing somebody because it's like an appointment of an appointment. But I'm going to, I thought about this and I think what's fair is really, what works best for this is a very strong council we have here. And I think we have multiple strong candidates, which I'm really happy to see. It's great to get to know people and how much we can actually uncover in these short interviews. And so that's great for Yardley. And so to me, the question is, what is the council most need right now during a time of an unprecedented time, really, an unknown future in terms of our financial situation? So I defer to the Chair of General Government and the Council Vice President, who says we need expertise in finance. And I look at what happened here. And there's something in problem solving that when I was in the private sector, Mr. Curtin is, if I was looking for a person who's knowledgeable in finance and that conversation happened in an interview, I would be like, hire that guy. Because what happened in that short period of time was very efficient problem solving. So I echo, you know, I think he's just, it's, it's about having the right person for the right situation. And I, I think that that's where we're at.
And I guess I'll, I'll chime in with the, you know, I want to first thank everyone that put their name in their hat, so to speak, and came out here and put themselves out there. I know it's tough and some of you have done this multiple times. So I do appreciate that. You know, it is a really tough choice. I'm very torn because I do think there's a lot. I'm very torn because I do think there's a lot of people could add something to our group and have different skill sets, who have different passions, who have different issues. But frankly, I see a multitude of issues. I think the floodplain ordinance is something that we're going to need to work on. I also see certainly the financial situation that we're in. I always see that we have a need for people that are competent and can work together with others. And that would be really good at working with our community. And I think there are a number of people who could fill that position. So I'm torn, but I do think we have some really good candidates which make a difficult choice.
I would like to add that every time we go through this process, it frustrates me that all five of these candidates do not serve the borough and any boards or commissions. And we have vacancies sitting open for months and years. And they are waiting for these qualified candidates to step forward.
People forward.
So this is not a no, this is a please do something else for the borough. And I guarantee you, for those who said they want to run next year, people at the doors are going to ask you, well, how are you serving the borough currently? What are you currently doing for the government in the borough? And we, we are, we are here to pad your resume. So please, please apply to the vacancies that we have.
Right. I just want to echo everything that was said tonight from council in regards to our applicants. You know, having more than one person step forward for a vacancy that is qualified for the position and would do well is a really excellent problem for council to have. And I look forward to the next election cycle that happens here because I know that many of you said that you, you plan to be a part of it. And I think that when we have multiple people who are qualified and willing to do good work, all stepping forward and, and being willing to take that on, the community can only win. So thank you to everybody for putting your name in. This is not easy. It's not always fun either. And with that, well, actually procedurally, I suppose I should ask for some public comment at this time as well. So are there any members of the public, not our applicants, obviously, we've heard from you already, but any other members of the public want to weigh in on the vote? Now would be the time. If you can make use of the raise hand feature in Zoom, that would be the best. But if you're having some technical difficulties, you can always just wave at me. All right.
Hello?
Yes, who do we have there? Name and address for the record.
Hey, sorry, guys. I am Pete Goodouty's son. I'm currently residing in Richmond, Virginia, but I'm considering moving back rather promptly. I would just like to take a moment and let everybody know here that I have worked with Dr. Perlmutter. I know her personally. And I just want to vouch for her as a person of culture and a person of character, being in federal law enforcement myself. But the article that was written on the, on the website may have differing opinions on the council than she holds. But that in and of itself shouldn't disqualify anybody from office, especially the threat that we face right now, whatever your political opinion is, especially at the national level, being a federal law enforcement, we definitely have an eye on it. So I just wanted to say that, and that really shouldn't disqualify somebody from political office. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment before we call the vote? See, Mr. Richarlison.
Hi, thank you very much. I just would like to thank my neighbors who have stepped up to fill this vacancy for your, your energy and your time and your civic mindedness. It seems to me that every one of you would, would have something to offer to the government of Yardley and would be a certain amount of help to the council. I do understand the motion to ask Matt to do the finances because he has a thorough professional background in this area. But I just wanted to thank everybody else. And I, I did note with joy Dawn and Dan's mention of Reading Avenue because this is close to our heart over here on this end of town. And I certainly do appreciate your awareness and keeping that issue alive. And we are hoping to, at least I'm hoping that we will be able to take some action this fall on that. Hopefully, next time we have a committee meeting, we'll be discussing that. But I just want to thank all those folks and encourage them to continue their involvement in Yardley. And God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richarlison. Do we have any further public comment tonight? All right, going once, going twice. All right, with that, I will call the question. And actually, Mary Ann, I'm going to hand this over to you so we can do a roll call vote.
Sure. Sorry, I have to go through all my names.
No, take a minute.
Got to go way up to the top, okay. Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Segal-Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Brea?
Aye.
Mr. McCann?
Aye.
Mr. Finer?
Hi.
Mr. Ross?
Why?
Thank you.
That is a six zero vote. Congratulations, Mr. Curtin, and welcome to council.
Thank you very much. Excited to, excited to work with everybody and get to know you guys and do what I can to help.
All right. Thank you, everyone, to our other
David, do we have swearing in with the mayor or no?
You know, that's a good question. We could do that now. We could do that at the start of the next meeting. Let's do it now, actually. Chris, are you ready?
Do you want your family on the call or anything like that for your swearing in?
Um, well, if it, look, on the margin, I prefer my kids to be here, but they're actually not here right now. So, but I don't want to delay doing it. I mean, Paula mentioned I could do something with them at Borough Council and Chris at some point, like, that's fine, right? I kind of really just want to get going and be helpful. So whatever you guys think is best, figure out, get them involved.
Paul, do you have anything to weigh in on that?
Well, there's also an affidavit, I believe, that needs to be concluded.
Yes.
So I don't know, typically, we would have that as well at the time of swearing in.
We can, we can put you to work before you're swearing in.
I'm happy to help out on a forever basis. Give you the swearing in when I can sign it. Whatever you guys think is best, I'm happy to do.
I know I would want my family there, so I think we should wait.
Okay, all right, we will follow up then.
Never underestimate the value of ceremonies.
Especially during a pandemic.
But effectively welcome and officially welcome when the paperwork is done.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, with that, just one more time, thank you to everybody else who participated and applied tonight. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Again.
Made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone. The time is 10:09. We are adjourned.
Good night.